They had a.
Kind of one group there.
He had a.
Make the state going in early again.
And they drew like a whole like this big which they.
Okay, I'll call. We need an order. Please try to apply to allegiance.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved Becky.
Roll call first.
Oh, sorry.
All board members are present. Um, then a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved Becky.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, then we have communications recognition. But Sanger?
Three minutes Alicia.
Yep, got it. Hello, Alicia Sanger. Um, so I just wanted to give you an update on funding for the respec tree. And so, um, reached out to people who I thought would be interested, but I want to give a shout out. So Melissa Pepping, her business, um, decided to fund the whole thing. So she kicked in four thousand and that is going to cover for sure. And so I proposed, and I'm not sure where it is in the process because I already got another two thousand, that we go ahead and book 10th and ninth grade for next year and just be like more impactful. And so I just wanted to say as like I talked to people in the community stuff, everybody was on board. And so, um, just kind of like, let's do something to get a little bit better on track. And, um, so just kudos to Melissa and a lot of people were super supportive of like a concrete thing we could do as like a large scale intervention.
Thank you for organizing that.
And thank you Melissa.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa. Appreciate that. Okay, then on to board committees. Becky?
Um, really nothing very exciting at the joint powers. Took us about fifteen minutes to get quorum, about another fifteen minutes to have the meeting. So the only thing that was a little bit exciting was to see, um, Albany has a therapy dog also, but they run it through their police department. Um, so she gave a presentation on how they're using their therapy dog. So it was interesting to see, so. But I think she, that dog belongs to the police officer herself. And then she, they trained it to be a therapy dog in conjunction with the school and the police department.
That's total.
Okay, thank you Becky. Greg?
Let's central lead. Uh, we met last week, uh, approval of the minutes. Uh, they're moving forward with a audit service. KLVD, KLV, KBD, I couldn't remember the acronym. One of the, uh, more interesting things that they brought forward was the percentage in dollar amounts for federal entitlements that we get currently through the Federal Department of Education. Uh, we currently receive about five hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to run our special ed programming, title programming. If most people aren't aware, but that money does not go away, um, especially this year. Uh, special ed funding is always one year delayed, so we're going to get that money for sure this coming year. What happens after that, we don't know. Uh, they did a revised budget for next year. They're looking at some budget cuts in their ALC program. And enrollment's been down quite a bit, uh, this year in their ALC program. What was the highlights from that meeting?
Okay, thank you. Uh, buildings and grounds, parking lot essentially is what that was. Um, Josh, you have any comments on that?
Uh, just the highlights from the meeting. We met on March fifth for a page turn was what it's called for to go through the, the last of the design changes for the parking lot and just a few highlights. Um, you know, we talked about operational costs and not having grass where salt is going to be, so they added an alternate. Um, water main and, uh, just different materials. Alternates there as well, uh, leaving some crushed asphalt on site to, uh, for the baseball field at East Parking. Bid date on March twenty seventh. Recommended award on March thirty first, and I believe we already have a special meeting for April seventh. Um, obviously no more phasing on the project. Um, ceremonial curbs were added, again, different products, talked about the treatment pond and not having it, um, manicured around, again, saving operational costs and the slopes that'll be there, so we'll be back to native grass again. Other than that, that's pretty much it. The project will start six, five, approval pending approval.
Any questions on Josh's report?
So currently are the grounds left not maintained, just to leave it go natural? Is that how it is now?
They were, they were natural for a long time and then they went to maintained? Is that correct?
Um, part of, yes, part of, part of our project we've done over the last couple of years is that whole creek ground, kind of cleaning it up a little bit. It's gotten overgrown. We've cut out a lot of dead trees, a lot of weeds, those type of things. And we did our last major cleanup last spring. It was at that time, uh, on behest of a biology teacher that we would let it grow more naturally. So that was just part of the discussion that that would grow naturally as this project goes in because everything on the south sides of that parking lot, that'll all be natural, so then there's no additional grooming that's going to be needed.
Can we, can we look at something like a, a, a controlled natural?
Yeah, that biology teacher that we talked to, we give, we gave him kind of full rein to develop what kind of plants, native plants, things that you want in there, so that teacher can use it as a lab.
This is primarily on the slope of the new ponds.
Yeah, I get that. It's just it can get out of control so fast.
Yeah, well, as it did for a long time.
And it looks not attractive.
Yes.
Okay, health and safety, that was really just housekeeping, talked about ventilation in the, um, welding shop. Going along with that project, some ventilation changes in the fax area. Um, bring that up to date, first aid kits, access to first aid kits. Anything else Greg? I think that's it. Oh, the pool, there's going to be some ventilation changes at the pool, which are minor for the ductwork portion of it, and we're going to be cleaning the filters in the pool as well. Hopefully that's minor, barring some unforeseen damage. Um, one thing I would like to point out is our police chief Craig Mouse was at the meeting. He made a comment, he was in Moore, I believe, was that it? And they have.
I'm sorry, Morris.
Morris. They have recently completed a parking lot project similar to what ours is. He was there on a day of a sporting event, said the traffic flow is very good and from his standpoint, a very safe environment. So that's something on our side that's going good there. Um, that's pretty much all there was there. If there's no questions, we'll move on to administration reports.
That must be me. All right, um, we've got, end of the quarter is Thursday. April ninth, I've got Mr. Swartz and his students are going to be going on a half day construct tomorrow field trip at River's Edge in St. Cloud. So I think, uh, Mr. Swartz does a really nice job of trying to expose his students to a lot of different, um, different job opportunities, uh, down the road, so. So that's, I think, going to be really good for our students. Uh, metal shop renovation, as you mentioned, is getting closer. Uh, the pad for the, um, the concrete pad was poured, um, I think on last week or in the end of last week. And, uh, so we should be able to have the equipment coming in as far as for the air handling units. So that's right around the corner, maybe the next meeting or maybe one of these meetings here before the end of the year. We can go down and take a peek at when it's all finished, so. Uh, we've got the statewide tornado awareness drill is on the tenth. It's just an FYI because everybody gets involved in that. Blood drive from National Honor Society is April eleventh. If you care to donate, uh, you're more than welcome to. And we've got the snow makeup day, uh, in students, uh, and staff is April seventeenth. And we've got spring break right after that, so moving right along. Soon as we get into spring, things start to kick in the idea.
Thank you Chad. Robbie?
Good evening. Um, student council is sponsoring a middle school dance activity night this Thursday from six to eight. Um, we'll have games and music and, um, Miss Kay's letting us use her black lights and things like that. So kids are looking forward to that. Friday, um, this Friday is an in-service grading day. So our secondary staff are going to have a suicide prevention presentation. We're doing a wellness scavenger hunt. And then the staff has some time to complete MCA test training that they need to do before we start that. And I know I've talked about access testing for our ELs, that is finally completed. And our staff tested a hundred and eighty-seven students, um, so it was a big undertaking. A big thank you to our EL staff again for doing that and MCA testing will start in a couple of weeks here and go through the middle of May. So that's the testing stuff as we, um, finish up the year. Any questions regarding any of that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg?
Uh, Ms. Pearson couldn't be here tonight. I'll quickly go over her report that you see in front of you. Elementary also will be doing a suicide prevention and core five, uh, supplement sessions for half the day on workshop day into twenty eighth. Grade three is participating in a Como Zoo residency program. Each class will host a Como Zoo resident teaching, four days of science classes with, uh, classroom teachers assisting. Uh, that money did come from a grant that was written by, uh, the elementary on that, so that didn't cost the school anything. There you see the schedule. We've got a big day coming up on Friday, April fourth is kindergarten roundup day. Uh, the PT's, PTA's fundraiser is scheduled for April seventh, uh, through April twenty fifth. And you see the testing and dates there for the elementary MCA testing. All right there. Any questions if anybody wants me to relay to Ms. Pearson? My report, uh, I think everybody's has seen in the news, the projection revenues and and the, uh, realistic future is coming into, coming into focus. Even the governor's budget, he's already reduced two hundred and forty million dollars in his spending for education. Both houses are now functioning, Senate's, uh, they're going to have to have an election in the Senate now. The policy bill deadline is April fourth and the overall budget bill deadline is April eleventh. Just a lot of different policy and funding bills and a lot of things that are being proposed. It's not till those bills come out of committee, then they go to both houses for, uh, creation of a single, single bills. And they all get into one ominous bill and hopefully that'll all be done by nine, May nineteenth. I highly doubt that's going to happen. I would like to publicly thank Janelle Hoffman, Doreen Frerix, Barb Mormon and Emily, and Emily Weakman for filling in when our school nurse was on leave. Uh, for those that have been on the board a while, we've had a hard time finding school nurses. Uh, like a lot of positions, school nurses are hard to come by. When I found out that our nurse was going to be on extended leave, I didn't panic. I was a little concerned, but I kind of put the word out there to a lot of people and I got a lot of names back and to the best of my knowledge, and I can check with Ms. Pearson, I don't think we won a day without a nurse. They were all able to fill in, which was really great. Especially during that flu and cold season which I'm still in. Just a quick public reminder, and Mr. Duckin talked about it, the building principals have sent these messages out to parents. Um, I hope it's no surprise on April sixteenth that we have school the next day for that makeup day in February. And we will be sending out an email reminder in early April regarding to all the parents in regards to this.
That will be a text too?
Um, I think we're just going to go off through synergy through.
If you do Thrill Share, it'll be a text message as well.
Yeah. I'll see if, I, sending that out, sometimes people say, oh, we got a message on Thrill Share and they kind of start to panic. We send that message out with advance and synergy, all the parents will get the email. And all the principals have sent that notification out too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody had asked me, why, why didn't you send it out earlier? We're not there yet. Things can happen. About three years ago, we had burned two snow days in April. So hopefully I'll send that message out with a caveat. Hopefully the weather stays and we'll be able to extend that Easter break a little bit into, into Tuesday, April twenty second. One final comment, uh, just noticed that they've been working on it. For those that remember in the storm last year blew off the roof of our dugout in the baseball field. That roof has now been replaced, uh, thanks to Kramer lumber or doing that, looks very nice and should be done in plenty of time for baseball season. We have a couple of weeks out from games anyway, so.
Going back up to the nurse for a second, do we fall out of any kind of complacency not having one on staff in a situation like that?
They were all certified nurses.
No, no, but if one of them couldn't fill in?
Um, if one of them couldn't fill in, we can get by a day or two without a nurse. Um, we've done that before when we had full-time nurses and couldn't find subs, but we would not get out of compliance. There are schools in our area that were not able to hire school nurses.
Okay.
Those schools have contracted through resource and training for nursing, uh, supports.
Any questions for Greg? Okay, thank you Greg. And we'll move on to non-action items. We have three policies for first review tonight, first of three reviews. First policy, fourth thirteen harassment and violence. Comments Greg?
For those policies that were posted on our website within the body of it, just paging through it. This policy doesn't change a lot in terms of, um, context or enforcement or issues. You'll see in a couple of different areas on the bottom of page two, there's just a redefinition of by statutory requirements. We see the same thing on page three, uh, redefinition by statutory requirement. But other than that, that's all that's covered or for changes in that policy.
Any questions or comments on that policy? If not, we'll move on to five twelve, school-sponsored student publications and activities.
For those students that are present here that are well involved in social studies and understanding this, there has been a major shift in, uh, school-sponsored student publications. It used to be in the old days that the last editor of record was the high school principal. That is not true anymore. There's been some extensions that have been granted. However, you'll see that A is scratched out on the first page, but those qualifications are still subject to guidelines on Roman numeral four, number B. So it's just more of a process and in working with Mr. Duckit, uh, there's some type of form that we would create in case there were some issues with student publications. And we're in the process of creating that if need be.
Any questions on that policy? Not move on to seven oh four, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets, fixed asset accounting system.
Uh, this one has not been updated, as you see, since two thousand and fifteen, ten years ago. Nothing has really changed there, just some of the verbiage and the policy has changed. And the reality is this, uh, uh, checking with my, Ms. Seiten Bogar, we already do all those things anyway, so we're good to go.
There is, there is one change, and the one change started last year, um, in that when you purchase bulk, it used to be that was still the individual item value. Now, if a bulk purchase is over twenty-five thousand, then combined item gets, um, put in success.
Already have those systems in place.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on that policy? Thank you Greg. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a quick run through the personnel. You'll see and it's noted on there, there is a resolution later for the hiring of the new superintendent by contract resolution. Uh, a number of years ago, we still, or we started putting those positions on our personnel just because it was an easy reference going back to dates when these people are hired. Not necessarily for superintendents, but for teachers, coaches, paras, so we have a quick, quick reference on all that. Some resignations for next year in junior high volleyball, some, uh, hiring of coaches for spring sports. This has kind of been the, uh, pattern that we follow every year when we have some regular resignations for the following sport season and hiring of this sport season. And of course, a, a big loss for the retirement of our head girls gymnastics coach, Katie Mazoy. We tough shoes to fill.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Stephanie?
Need a motion.
Oh. Have a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
We're looking pretty good. Uh, we're basically in line with this expenses and the revenues from last year, just with the bump, um, of the increases for this year, inflation or what have you. Uh, you also have the cash flow statement with you and, um, again, really in line. There's really nothing out of the ordinary. Um, we did get some donations. Um, and then a lot of our fees are just for our activities that we received. And we did get, uh, medical assistance funding just under six thousand dollars this last.
Greg, any questions there? Not a motion been made, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto action items. First item is, um, gifts and donations. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Greg?
Got some, uh, very good donations from, uh, some local and some regional donations. Uh, nice donation for our PBIS program in the elementary and our preschool program, and as always, some great donations for our extracurricular activities as well there. Some really, really nice donations.
Okay, we'd like to thank all these organizations for their gifts once again, and we need roll call vote here. Becky?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes as well. Okay, on to policy one oh two. Can I have a motion to approve this policy?
I saw move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on the policy?
No changes since the first review.
Okay, if there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Policy two oh four, can I have a motion to approve the policy?
I saw move.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this policy?
Yeah, the only change since the first discussion was to post a, uh, unapproved minutes on, from the agenda on their website when they're ready. Uh, Ms. Oliver is here, my administrative assistant, and I'll work with her to get those unapproved minutes posted as quickly as possible on our website.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Third policy is five twenty-two, Title IX. Greg?
Yeah, before I think anybody makes a motion on this, I would make the recommendation to table it. Anybody that's followed the, this story in the news knows that there's an ongoing battle in the state of Minnesota with the federal government on oversight of, of, uh, Title IX activities. We have been recommended by our legal counsel to table it. Tabling it defaults us to our old policy, which still puts us in line, but allows us some time for that conflict to resolve itself. And then we were able to bring forth a new policy in the future that meets all the recommendations of both state and federal government.
I guess I'm in favor of tabling it.
I'll make the motion to table it.
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
Yeah.
Do we? Okay. Have a second?
Second, oh, second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is title program for fiscal year two, twenty-six. Can I have a motion to approve this program?
I saw move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
This is just an annual resolution to make sure that we participate in all title programs for next year. Uh, we've done this every year. Um, we've never had an issue with it. The funding funds both Title one, two, three, and four, and I would recommend to the board that we approve it again for next year.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, pathways MOU, can I have a motion to approve this MOU?
I saw move.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Greg?
A, um, high school math teacher approached me, excuse me. A high school teacher, math teacher approached me about getting your EL licensure, which I think would be a huge benefit for our school, um, especially at the secondary level with a lot of our EL students coming in. And, um, however, this would be a, out of compliance with our teacher contract. I have worked with the teachers, uh, worked with this teacher, and we've come forth with an MOU that will grant her the ability to do this, thirty semester credits. And with any MOU, it is a non precedent setting MOU that possibly could be negotiating the contract next time around. Possibly.
I have a question, Greg. What is the sunset date on that MOU, just when she finishes the course?
Yes. Yep, nobody, like I said, it's a non precedent setting. Nobody else will be able to come forth. If it doesn't happen, we can always negotiate another MOU. But as far as anybody being able to do it because of this action, they will not be able to do it, and that's obviously agreed to by the union.
Any further questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Elementary opening MOU, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Greg?
In the past, um, we've had our open houses during fall workshop, both elementary, middle school and high school. It's actually worked out kind of well. We tried to juggle the dates around elementary this night, that night. Um, but what we're finding out in, um, the elementary schools are doing, uh, are, are much more successful at doing what's called a soft opening. Many schools around here already do it, so instead of a open house at fall workshop, they do an open house the first two days of school, the following Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, at the start of the school. The reason why we have to have an MOU for it, because it does shift the teacher day. So the teacher day, the eleven hour day for the elementary, which would be during the fall, fall workshop, would be now Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, with the more the following Wednesday. And that would shift the open house from fall workshop for the elementary from, excuse me, the open house from fall workshop to the first week of school. Union has agreed to it. Our elementary is supportive of it. Not only our elementary principal, but her leadership with her elementary is very supportive of this. This would be one thing that would probably be very easily negotiated into the contract.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item, can I have a motion to approve adding a speech language pathologist assistant position?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
This would be a relatively new position in the area, uh, for a lot of schools. Uh, I spoke earlier about the inability to find teaching staff, nursing staff. Speech language teachers are very hard to come by. We're actually short about a half of one right now. A position has been created, which you see in front of you and you see the job position description in the next, um, in the next, uh, resolution. That, uh, this will allow our speech language teachers to use more efficient, more efficiently of their time of working with their students and not doing a lot of the paperwork and other tasks that could be performed by this teach, by the speech language pathologist assistant. Um, you'll see in the job description, it does require a two-year degree. Alexandra Evotec, uh, recently, uh, worked with MDE to create this program. And they are, and they, students have already graduated from this. I apologize with my coughing, it just seems out of sync here. We did post it just to see if there was any interest out there, and we got a few applicants. But before we interview, I talked to the, uh, powers that be in the building. We do have to get the school board to number one, approve the position, and with any position, we also have to get the school board to approve the job description. The funding for this, uh, it will, we will be able to use some special ed funding for it. And there also are, uh, bills in the legislature right now that everybody is very positive about that. By the time the legislative session is over. that everybody is very positive about that by the time the legislative session is over, we won't hire this position till next fall. But by the time the session is over, we'll also be able to use MA funds to cover the cost of this position.
It's full-time, right?
Yes. And we have a contract, boilerplate contract made.
Do you have any idea what percentage of the funding it'll cover?
If we can get special ed funding and AM, MA funding, it would cover close to 100% of it. But I, you know, nothing's 100%, but a lot of it.
Did you say, Greg, that you wouldn't hire until the fall?
Well, we would hire now, but the position would start till next fall. Yeah, we'll hire at the discretion of the board, whether they approve this resolution in the next. Then we would probably hire within the next couple of weeks, get ahead of the game. And once again, I've said this many times before. I'll say it till my last meeting. This is a pretty good spot for people to come to, and they want to come here. So we got some good applicants that along the way.
Would they be on their own contract or how would that go? It wouldn't be on the teacher's contract?
No, it was, it's a separate contract. The SLPA position, because it requires a two-year degree, not a four-year degree. It would not be under the teacher's contract, nor would it be on the parent contract. It would be a standalone contract, much like our interventionist.
How would we, say this continues on and on, would that contract be yearly or a three-year deal? Or how would we look at it? Two-year contract.
Have you seen the need for speech-language, as I said, have you seen that increase?
Yes.
After COVID?
Yep. Quite a bit. The old understanding of speech, speech-language help usually phase a lot of it out by the time they get to high school. But because of some of our student demographics, it bleeds into high school a little bit. And that's what's caused some of the overload and you just can't find speech-language.
Thank you.
Henceforth, why this position was created to help schools out.
Is this a classroom setting or is it more one-on-one?
It is a support setting with the teachers. There can be, if you read in the job description, there can be some working one-on-one with the students, but it's all going to be in support of the speech-language teachers.
Any further questions? Not, all in favor of adding the position?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next item is speech-language pathologist assistant job description. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Anything other questions other than, what was it, already answered in the previous discussion? I certainly, you have a copy of the job description there for you. We did a major rewrite of our job positions, excuse me, job descriptions three years ago now. And I want to be cognizant of the fact that every time we do create a new position, that we have a job description for that position within our district.
Any questions? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, can I have a motion to approve a revision to the 25, 26 school calendar?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
If you look at the calendar, that's been posted, that's been given to you. In the left side column, that's highlighted in yellow, shows the changes that will have to be made in the calendar because of the previous resolution.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's vacation buyout?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Greg and Becky discussed this, I believe.
Probably one of the reasons I'm sick is because I don't take any vacation time, or I should say rarely. I've got a lot of vacation time to take and board representation, knowing that did approach me. I've got about 22 days yet for the end of the year, and that would pretty much wipe out June and half of May for me. With board, with this resolution, I can be here for a lot of those days, continuing to help in the transition and of the new superintendent. And also, part of that is making sure that I continue to work with our business manager, John Feldward, on the projects that are going on this summer. So hopefully, the superintendent, as he comes on board, everything will be running smoothly. Transition plan will all be in place, and it should go off, I hope, without a hitch.
Okay, any discussion or questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then final item, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent contract the next three years for Zach Ting?
I saw move.
I'll second. Okay, comments? Everybody's been through the contract? Agrees with it? I know Herman did request a copy of that. Do we have a copy here for him?
I can print one off real quick for you, Herman.
Well, if there's no further discussion.
I do wish we would have spent just a little bit more time last week talking about it. I don't feel like we had a strong negotiation process or plan. And one of the things that really kind of just hits hard with me and doesn't land, one of his responsibilities is to negotiate contracts. And it would have been nice to see him in action negotiating his own. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to go in with something that would have been a little bit more attractive for him to counter. So I would appreciate it going forward. If we could be cognizant and just really think out the long game so we can have more conversation about it, we missed a great opportunity to see how he would come to the table with that.
I also think, you know, we can take that twofold, and I can respect what you're saying, Melissa, but I also think we found someone that wants to be here, did not negotiate that offer at all.
I'm in favor of offering a fair contract up front.
Yep, me too. I'm just saying that, you know, I think, you know.
I don't think we would have been at rock bottom.
I just like the fact that, you know, he said that he wanted to be here when we met with him during interviews. We gave him that opportunity. He took it. And, you know, we did not start at rock bottom, but we didn't start higher up where we may have with someone else. So I do agree that, you know, that's definitely a big role that he takes part of. But like we talked before, I think it's more of a team atmosphere there where, you know, we're going to have a lot of say in that with our negotiating members of our board as well, so. But not opposed to, you know, him having some training or more training or some experience that would help us make sure that, you know, our community, you know, feels comfortable with it.
I would have felt uncomfortable not offering at that rate. Because it wouldn't have been very competitive.
Because of what he was getting here.
So I think it was a fair contract.
Noted, Melissa. We have discussion in the future.
We push fast on things.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, Greg, I get to say the words that no superintendent wants to hear from a board. You've been replaced.
My position's been replaced. I have been replaced. There's another body sitting here in July. And as I said, I will give him every ounce of support in his transition. He will get all my Google Docs. He will get everything. So he will be able to hit the ground running with a very wide set of resources, good staff, good school board. Things will keep going.
And he has expressed, he plans to come in for a few days and be staff and sit with Greg.
Absolutely.
It would take some personal days and come in and do that, so. You excelled in the area of finance, numbers, and the legislative process.
Well, I've had good support for that too, in business managers and our associations.
I would greatly appreciate it if you could spend a special focus on that with him because he has zero, not extensive experience in that. So those would be, those are my, and I've discussed, my areas of concern.
We will work with him.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm not going to be able to fly.
What's that? I have a schedule right now. I was thinking eight.